I'd like to call the meeting back to order, please. The first item is to go out of closed meeting, be resolved in the Board of Supervisors and close meetings to return to regular session. Do I have a motion, please?
Move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
A move and seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Bix.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Mr. Creed.
Aye.
Chairwoman Lewis.
Aye.
And the next item on the agenda is the certification of closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Court of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the meeting requirements by the Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion, please? I very good motion.
Second.
Move and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Bix.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Mr. Creed.
Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Chairwoman Lewis.
Aye.
Set an ayes.
The next item on the agenda is the invocation, and prior to the invocation, I'd like to ask that we keep Walt Haynes, a long-term member of our planning commission, in our thoughts as he passed away last Saturday night. And following that will be the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pledge, please.
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next item is delegation, and it's the Virginia Tech Montgomery Regional Airport Authority. Michael Sanzine, Executive Director, will make his presentation on the airport's activities. Welcome, Michael.
Thank you very much, a good evening to members of the Board, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to brief you this evening. I have some new slides and some old information to pass to the Board. A lot of it is exciting. We've made a lot of changes. We've got a lot of programs that are about to hit on the airport. This evening's program, I'd like to go over the authority structure, mission and vision statement, economic impact, which is new information, master planning, financial mechanisms, and capital projects of the airport, past projects and current projects and future projects. The structure of the authority is made up of Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Montgomery County, and Virginia Tech. And the next two slides are very important because the rest of the presentation will be based upon these slides, which is the mission and the vision statement. The purpose of such an authority shall be develop a regional airport based on the mission of servicing corporate executive markets, other general aviation markets, obtaining grants and other funding for airport improvements, and in promoting and assisting in regional economic development. And the vision statement states that the airport's vision is to provide a safe, well-maintained transportation facility where people desire to work and conduct business. We envision a community that has pride in its airport and recognizes the economic value it brings to the area. This vision is to be accomplished by increasing airport utilization through infrastructure development and sound business strategies. Like, one thing I'd like to point out is the airport is like the on and off ramp to the national transportation system. Commercial service airports have bigger on and off ramps, like Exit 150. We have Exit 114 and 118, and these would be smaller on and off ramps, and the airport in Blacksburg would be one of the smaller off ramps. It's a platform that supports import and export of manufacturing, education, research, recreation, tourism, and other services. The Virginia Department of Aviation just completed a Virginia Airport Impact Statement, and that's where the source for the rest of this material comes from. From the statewide system, Virginia airports contribute $28.8 billion in economic activity to Virginia economy, or 4.4 percent of the state's total economic output. 259,000 jobs are created and sustained by Virginia airports, or 5.5 percent of total jobs in Virginia. An $11.1 billion in payroll is realized as a result of jobs created by Virginia airports. Each day approximately 23,000 visitors arrive in the state by commercial or general aviation aircraft, and for every dollar spent at a Virginia airport contributes an additional $3.48 in economic activity for Virginia. Virginia general aviation airports contribute $728 million in economic activity for the How economic impact is measured? It's measured three different ways: direct impact, activity that is directly related to the provision of their services, visitor spending, or activities of airport-dependent businesses; indirect impact, is business-to-business transaction that occurs as a result of off-airport purchases made by airport tenants, airport-dependent businesses that air visitors patronize. Visitor spending. Surveys indicate that for a local service airport, BCB, and BCB is the three-letter identifier for the airport in Blacksburg, that there is an average of $202.38 per visitor spending, and that we receive two visitors per operation, or 8,182 visitors per year. As such, BCB generates $1,655,000 a year in visitor spending. We generate approximately 16,000 operations per year. That's where that information comes from. Direct impacts of jobs represents total number of individuals employed, including both part and full-time positions. Payroll is the annual salary, wages, and benefits. And economic activity includes annual gross sales for commercial firms and/or budget expenditures for government and nonprofit entities. Induced impacts are realized when workers employed in airports of whose jobs are supported by businesses that services visitors, or airport-dependent businesses, spend their earnings in their local communities. And indirect and induced impacts capture the flow of transactions through successive rounds of spending known as multiplier effect. If you look at the top line, it says on-airport activities. Under jobs, and this is local, there are 27 employees working at the airport, either for the airport authority, or for the university, or for the fixed base operator. That is the person who provides services for airport services on the airport. We have also an independent flight instructor. We have Enterprise Ronald Karne that provides personnel there as well. So that's where the 27 jobs come from. This generates $915,000 annually in payroll, and that supports $5,500,000 in economic activity just for the airport. And that money flow of goods is being put right back into the economy, and that's where those dollars come from. If you look at the bottom box, it says 2010 Activity Data. It says general aviation operations 14,000, and GA visitors 8,182. It seems like many of them we get during football season. Next on the program, I have master planning purposes, and the master plan was completed in 2008, and updated and reexamined the 1995 airport layout plan and the master plan. It guides airport development, provides a document that can work with the plans surrounding jurisdictions, and serves as a basis for acquiring state and federal funding. Now, I'm getting the slides that I like with the pictures on them. If you'll, for those who are familiar with the airport, this is the terminal, right here. This is a 20-year build-out, that if the airport was completed today, we would have all of this apron, all of these hangars, all of this new facility right here, which is where the old Toki hangar currently is, new fuel farm, so the whole structure of the airport will be redesigned. Presently, we have this section that I'm highlighting right here, which is the old apron. That project has been rehabilitated. This is a new apron right here. This project has been complete. And then we have infrastructure development right here for a new corporate hangar. And the corporate hangar hasn't been placed yet. We're waiting for a tenant to take advantage of that particular situation. The rest of this is out in the future and downshing. Drilling in a little bit, this is where the rehabilitation of the apron is. Here's the new apron section, and here is the new site preparation for a corporate hangar. Again, the rest of this is not realized yet. That's in the master plan. Part of the master planning is looking at transportation road structures, and one of the runway, and part of the runway extension project is a road relocation of Tech Center Drive. In the master planning, we looked at three different scenarios. One scenario loops it around the future airport extension right here. Another scenario drives it into Tech Center Drive, and then the preferred alternative hooks it up right here with the signalized dock pond right here. And you can see the projected runway extension right here, so that's part of the master planning, like the comprehensive plan for the county. Here's a much wider view of the perspective, and if you recall on the master plan, I said we work in conjunction with other entities. You'll notice down here, this is the corporate research Phase II park, and we work with the CRC as they develop their land here. This is the new 460 interchange, and bringing it into where Dock Pond is. And if you'll notice, this was where South Gate used to be, and that will eventually go away in response to this interchange. So we work with VDOT, we work with the university, we work with the county, and we work with the town to ensure that all of these particular plans dovetail with one another. Who pays for this? Financial basics of the airport capital improvement is funded by federal, state, and airport-generated revenues. When I say federal dollars or federal grants, we're using 95 percent, and it's now changed. It's now 90 percent of that. That money does not come from the general fund of the United States government, but in fact comes from the Transportation Trust Fund. The state is the same thing. It's now, instead of 3 percent, it's 8 percent, and the federal side of that is 90 percent. The local matching share for any of the capital improvements at the airport is only 2 percent. So it's 2 cents on the dollar that we invest to get all of this infrastructure. Operations, our day-to-day business is funded completely through airport-generated revenues, local government sponsorship. There are no federal or state assistance in our day-to-day operations. The federal funding comes from domestic passenger ticket tax of 7.5 percent, domestic passenger flight segment, which is $3, passenger ticket tax at rural airports, so if you get a flight from West Virginia, they charge you an additional 7.5 percent, or Hawaii, not Hawaii, but Alaska, and other rural regions of the United States. If you fly overseas, they charge you $12 to depart, $12 to arrive. There's a frequent flyer tax, waybill, and domestic freight. And here is probably where we generate most of the revenue for the Transportation Trust Fund, is fuel sales. For jet fuel, which is kerosene for turbine-powered aircraft, that's 24.3 cents, and for avgas, which is normal reciprocating airplane engines, that's 19.3. That's where all the funding comes from to support AIP or airport improvement grants.
Can I ask a question about the tax? How long has it been at that rate? Or do you know?
I don't know, but I'm thinking probably back into the early 90s.
Okay, thanks.
Operational revenue sources for the airport include fuel sales, which is our primary revenue source, land leases, hangars, fixed base operations, which is the mechanic, the flight school charter aircraft, car rental, game day parking, and advertising. We do have wall advertising in the terminal building. As for the game day parking, the airport last year during six games generated $77,000, which is a good revenue stream for the airport. We take advantage of our situation or our position. Completed projects, and this is the foundation from where we built. For the last 10 years, there's been a lot of federal dollars, state dollars, that have been invested in the airport to create the foundation for where we want to go with this airport. The apron rehabilitation, which I outlined earlier, the construction of that was $2.5 million. Now, when I use these dollars, remember that we're using local engineering firms, local design contractors, local builders, and that's where this money is being invested. So here's some of the economic impact being reinforced through using federal dollars. The apron expansion was $2.3 million. We had another product that I did not outline, which was the acquisition of property along South Main Street, which was a safety project, that was $5.6 million. The site preparation for a corporate hangar, and I showed you that green box, that is $960,000. That was a state and local share that was 80 percent funded by the Virginia Department of Aviation, and 20 percent of that revenue came from the airport. Completed projects, we have just completed our environmental assessment. It's sitting on the desk at FAA headquarters right now, waiting for a finding of no significant impact. Once that approved, then all of the rest of our products will move forward this federal fiscal year. Last year, we did a complete runway rehabilitation, which was almost $6 million. We were shut down at limited operations for approximately nine months, but we phased it so we weren't completely closed for almost a year. We still generated enough revenue to support our operations from day-to-day. The new approach lights, which is $180,000, and our master plan update was $300,000. Again, these monies are being funneled right back into the local economy. Current projects for this state fiscal year and are up until October 31st will be a T-hanger site design for $125,000. The design for the relocation of Tech Center Drive, which is $97,000. Land acquisition services for Runway 12, which is $76,000. We have to acquire approximately 40 acres of property on Virginia Tech to facilitate or get into the runway extension and the road relocation. And this is the Phase 1 of that. This will act as the land acquisition. This will do the environmental due diligence audit, the surveys, the appraisals, and the review appraisals. Actual land acquisition will not happen until the following year. And then the runway design extension will be a little over $600,000. 2 percent of these funds are coming from the airport authority. Near-term projects will be the actual runway extension, which is approximately $5 million. The T-hanger construction will be $1.6 million, and the road relocation will be $2 million. We're working with VDOT right now, with that the federal dollars will be flowing from the FAA through the airport to VDOT, because VDOT will be designing the relocation of Tech Center Drive, and the following year will be actually doing the construction of Tech Center Drive in conjunction with the new interchange. This is a Gulfstream 4. This aircraft landed at the airport approximately three weeks ago. It is Jimmy Gibbs or Gibbs International. They deal with manufacturing, they deal with international trucks, they, real estate, hospitals. This is the type of aircraft that works extending the runway to receive because of the amount of money that this type of aircraft will normally put into the economy. The aircraft holds 1,100 gallons of jet fuel, but because we had a shortened runway of 4,500 feet, we only purchased 300 gallons. So we want, it's an international, this aircraft has the capability of flying to Frankfurt, Germany, nonstop. And I've seen other pictures of it in Amsterdam, and in Germany, in Syria, so this is a world travel jet. And that completes my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of the Board members?
Tell them, Michael, what the runway will be once it's extended.
The runway will be extended to 5,500 feet. It currently serves, as currently is, 4,500 feet.
Any other questions or comments?
So we're going to pay Virginia Tech for their land to use, for what you were saying you need to get, the 40 acres?
Yes, the Federal Aviation Administration will be using federal dollars and state dollars to pay 98 percent of that land.
And right now, you all have enough money to do all of this, based on what you have? Or what's this 2 percent local thing?
The 2 percent for the coming year is approximately $170,000. And then the following years, it will be approximately another $300,000. And if we look at that over a five-year period of time, yes, we have generated enough revenue through operational and the contributions that we receive from the four entities to support that.
Thank you.
What are the contributions?
All four entities provide the airport authority $50,000 annually.
Each?
Each.
Just like to say thank you, Michael, for the update, and it seems like it's a lot of exciting things going out around the airport, and it was kind of shocking to hear $77,000 with six home games.
Mm-hmm.
They must be doing something right.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else?
It's called maximizing your opportunities.
How many planes do we have coming in usually on the average at a tech game?
To a tech game, we average normally about 50 aircraft. We have up towards 80 aircraft during a couple of games. So one of our critical infrastructure needs will be expanded apron space to handle the additional traffic that we expect coming in. We also need additional apron space in the future because our Monday-through-Friday traffic, the normal corporate business, is stressing the airport right now because we have a lot of corporate jets coming in to conduct business in the community as well.
So then that will help when the corporate research asset expands too, right?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Creed?
You're saying "we" and "us," and that, when you're talking about the money that you're receiving? And does any of that money that you're receiving go into the 2 percent?
No. The money that I'm receiving from the FAA, well, I think, let me answer that. The question I think you're asking is any of the money that I receive from the sponsors' contribution, part of my 2 percent?
Any of the money that you're talking about that y'all take in?
Okay. On capital project, we receive 95 percent of the money from the FAA, and, actually, 90 percent of the money from the FAA, and 8 percent from the Virginia Department of Aviation. And that is solely dedicated for capital projects. The revenue that I generate from operations and the sponsors' contribution takes care of day-to-day operational, as well as airport's 2 percent of the capital contribution, and money that we can set aside to ensure that we have funding in the future to support our 2 percent capital contribution. But I, I hope I...
You used "two" there several times. I'm not sure which one you want.
The 2 percent. I'm sorry, please go ahead.
I guess the answer was, no, the counties will pay the 2 percent. Is that...
No. No. The four entities, Montgomery County, Virginia Tech, Blacksburg, and Christiansburg, each provide the airport authority $50,000 annually.
Okay.
And then on top of the revenue that we generate through our additional services, like hangar rentals, land leases, and things such as that, that takes care of, the money combined takes care of our 2 percent, plus our operation expenses.
Okay, so the county will still just be paying the $50,000?
Yes, yes.
That answers my question.
I think that we and us, Steve was referring to, Michael was saying this, is the airport authority primarily.
Yes, I wish right now.
Anybody else? Michael, thank you very much for the update.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michael.
The timeline to finish that Tech Center Drive and the no South Gate exchange, the new exchange and all that, how far away is it from being completed today?
Design is this federal fiscal year, and that will probably take about a year to design. Construction to begin the year after that, and it'll probably take a year to a year and a half for construction to be completed. Again, working with all of the entities, it becomes challenging when dealing with VDOT or the Federal Highway Administration, or any of the other entities that are involved. So, but that's the best guess that I can provide right about now. I'm sure Dean can answer the rest of those questions.
Well, three to five years, somewhere, but probably more like three or four years. It should all be completed.
How we... Thank you again. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. The following public hearing was advertised pursuant to law in the Berg section of the Roanoke Times on May 27th and June 3rd. This is a proposed ordinance vacation of portion of public utility and drainage easement at Lusters Mill Phase 2 subdivision. Do I have a motion, please?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, wake up, Jim. Mr. Sandy, I believe will...
Mr. Chair, I'll address this. Before you is the ordinance vacating a portion of a public utility and drainage easement. If you look under Tab A, there's a post plat, and what we have is, there's two lots, Lot 21 and Lot 22, that are owned by Mr. and Mrs. Nesbit, and they've requested that the Board consider vacating the existing public utility and drainage easements that cut in between their two lots. And what they plan to do is vacate that interior lot line and go from two lots to one lot, and that new lot will be called Lot 21A. But they want to get rid of those easements, and by state law, in order to do that for a subdivision that has lots already sold, is you either get everybody in subdivision to agree to the vacation of those and sign the plat, which isn't very realistic. And then the other option, the option that we generally advise them to do, is they come to this Board and seek the Board's approval to have those utilities easements vacated. As you see, also under Tab A is an affidavit sent in by their licensed land surveyor, and he states that there, one, there's no utilities, and then utilities, which is important, obviously. We don't want to vacate something that has public utilities in. And then the second one is that the drainage easement area, there's no natural or man-made course, drainage course running through that. So basically what he's saying there is it's not being used to drain any water, any public water. And so what's before you today is a consideration of vacating those two easements. And in order to do that, you have to do it by ordinance, and before you can do an ordinance, you have to go public. So that's what brings us here today.
All right, are there any questions of the Board?
And I guess I'm a little old-school. Has anybody gone out there, other than their surveyor, and looked at it and said, hey, listen, that's correct. There's no other drainage that's going to be coming out that's public drainage that's going into there?
Steve did. Did you look at it?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And they were satisfied as well?
Okay. Anybody else? Hey, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this public hearing? If so, please come forward, say your name and address, and you have five moments. If so, please come forward, state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing. The next item on the agenda is public address. We have nobody signed up for public address, but if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak at this public address, you have five minutes, please. Come forward, state your name and address. Seeing no one, we will close public address. The next item is, I need a motion to go into work session, please.
No move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gaylord?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Spitz?
Aye.
Chair Palatas?
Aye.
Senator?
Okay. First item on the agenda is the New River Valley Juvenile Detention Home.
I'm going to recognize Ms. Edmonds to introduce Mr. Young.
You should all have a copy of the superintendent's report in front of you. I think he'll be speaking from that. By way of introduction, I wanted to just give a little bit of background so everybody's on the same page here. I'm not sure if everyone knows that the New River Valley Detention Home is comprised of Montgomery County, Pulaski County, Giles County, and the city of Bradford. Floyd County is not a member of the commission. One of the things that you'll be hearing about tonight is the facility. We on the commission are dealing with facility issues. We have a '70s building. So as we're all quite familiar, there are issues that need to be dealt with and things that need to be upgraded. You have two representatives on the commission. I serve as one and Supervisor Brown serves as your other representative. And tonight, the superintendent's going to talk to you about some of the issues in our building, some of the things we've been looking at as a commission, but primarily what we wanted to do is make sure that we start with each of the governing bodies who are a member of the commission and make sure everybody is with us on this journey going through this process, that you're all familiar with what the issues are, you're familiar with the steps we're going to take, so that when we come to the end about how we're going to address this and deal with it, you'll be prepared and, and know why we're here and where we're going. So with that said, I'll introduce our relatively new superintendent, Joe Young, who's going to go over this for you.
Good evening. How is everyone?
Great.
It's an absolute, as a resident of Montgomery County, it's an absolute honor to be here in front of you all. Thank you for having me. If you could picture August 1974, what kind of clauses that contrived? If we think about Nixon just resigning from presidency, computers used punch cards for information, seatbelt use was optional, and A-Track players were all the rage. And the New River Valley Juvenile Detention Home opened its doors, complete with residence smoking sections. Today, as we all know, the world is a much different place, that's with one exception. The detention home has not changed. If you closed your eyes, walked through the door, you would think you were back in the '70s. And we're kind of okay with that. As part of your packet, I included some excerpts from our needs assessment. One needs assessment was done in 2000, and another one was completed, I believe, in 2008. In that needs assessment that was conducted by Thompson, Thompson and Litten, it showed that the facility is in fact well overdue for some kind of renovation. We're not compliant with Virginia Uniform Building Code, we're not conform, conforming to the Americans with Disabilities Act, and we're not conforming with the Department of Civil Justice construction standards. We do not have a sprinkler system. The only section of the building that has a sprinkler system is where we keep our dried pastas and flour. We still use key locks, and the locks that we use are no longer made. So we scour the country for warehouses that still have some old boxes laying in the corner. The only areas with video monitoring are the gym, the front door, intake door, PD classroom, and exterior kitchen door. Security features that are common in public schools, and even in this facility that we're in currently right now, are much more advanced than a maximum security juvenile secure detention center. From an operational standpoint, when we look at, we face a terrible lack of storage and office space, that you'll see in the pictures. We have an insufficient number of restrooms. We have no interview rooms, interview rooms for attorneys. Supervisor Tuckwell does. There are numerous blind spots and active program areas. All of these issues combined create serious liability issues. From a security standpoint, we are faced with detainees who have more serious charges than ever before. Even though our numbers are down from 10 years ago, when we easily housed 50 detainees, now we average 19 to 20, the charges of those kids are more concentrated. Thanks to a juvenile detention assessment instrument that POs use, we're getting the worst of the worst. Your more status offenses are staying out of detention. We're getting the ones that really truly need to be in detention. With these detainees, we have to maneuver a facility that has none of the basic security measures found in other detention facilities, schools, or government buildings, with the added problem of blind spots that are not monitored by any kind of video equipment. To say it, picture's worth a thousand words. That's why I have the pictures as part of your handout that I think is also on your schnazzy little iPads. As we look at the first page, that's again the summary of the needs assessment, followed by a brief history of the facility. I think it'll be interesting to note how many staff the building was built for, and we're probably double that now. That's why we're in every crevice in the facility. If you flip to the next page, you'll see the intake area, which as you notice, there are no holding cells. It's not uncommon for us to get three intakes at one time. That intake worker has to securely take care of all three without any luxury of having a holding cell to hold those other two. Adjacent to our intake, you'll see the clinic, which is also used for an electronic courtroom and a staff training room. So if we're having electronic court, and there's an emergency in the facility, the judge is going to have to be interrupted while we get into the clinic, and that doesn't make anybody happy. Space is at a premium, so we've turned a couple closets into offices. And as you see in the pictures, they truly are small. As I mentioned earlier, we have no interview rooms, so Staff Lounge, which is shown on the next page, is used for attorney visits. And in fact, this lack of privacy led one attorney to contact the Attorney General's Office, which has the letters attached. It creates issues. It's issues we're aware of. We deal with them the best we can. We have staff that's absolutely second to none in handling all these adversities. If we move through the packet, we'll see a route that's used to take detainees to the gym. And this is kind of the quintessential example of how the detention facility's lacking in security. Our main health office, posty classroom and gym is in a far, 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 far side of the building. And to get to that side of the building, you have to snake through four doors. Three of those doors are locked. If you can imagine 20 kids lined up, it's really tough to be able to keep sight of all those kids as they wiggle through. And that goes through a shower room. And we also use my office as the only other easement into the gym for professional visitors so that they don't have to go through that shower room. At times, it can be quite embarrassing. Finally, on the second, on the next page, you'll see in our kitchen, the mop closet is also the food service manager and the cook's office to do paperwork. When they finish cleaning out the mop, they put a piece of plywood up on the sink, and that magically becomes our office to do our USDA paperwork. Then we'll move on to a typical detainee room. This really shines in the '70s. The only thing secure in that room is the steel door. If you notice, the bed, the water spout, the toilet is not suicide resistant. Sheets can easily be tied to those and be used for a way to have self-harm by strangulation. And the metal screens that are over the windows are like cheese graters, where we often have kids who'll grind their face on it, knuckles, hands, when they're upset. And in the last photo, you can kind of see the capstone of our 40-year-old HVAC system that's rusting out. We'll see that all over the building. We maintain it as best we can, kind of get through it, and it's, it works pretty well for us so far. On the last page, I did a little building floor plan, for those of you that, if it's been a while since you've gone over, kind of give you a glimpse in our building, and kind of try to point while I'm taking the pictures, and kind of the issues that we have. I think you can see the little S zigzag from the gym, which will be on the bottom right, how we get into the center portion of the building, which is activity floor. I guess at this point, I really need to clarify, the whole reason I'm here, is we don't plan on adding any beds. We just want to make the beds we have safer. I think the size of our facility is fine. The time when people want to build new things, they want it to be big and grand and pretty, we just want to make the 24 beds we have safer. And I also want to extend anyone on the board, if you want to come back for a visit, we'd love to have you. And the purpose of the presentation is that we're moving to the next stage, since we've been working on the needs assessment since 2000, 2008. Our next step that the board's going to take is to enter in the close the architect's for a planning study, to kind of see what would that new facility look like, vermin be, most certainly where we are now. And the big key question is, how much would that cost? So I think that's our board's consideration, when we let all the jurisdictions know kind of where we're headed. You know, we've sat around, and now's the time to do it. You know, it may not look like the best time, but now's the time. We have several standards that are coming out, and I'll keep it brief, but there are a lot of federal mandates that are coming down that are really going to start making it really tough for us to stay in conformity to the standards of all the other detention facilities in the state and in the country are conforming to. That's all I have here.
Any questions of board members?
I've dealt with the problem of not having a, and your staff has been very accommodating. Either I've met in the, when people weren't eating, they would just put me in the great room, or in the hallway in between the two locked doors. But at the same time, it is not a conducive situation for attorney-client conferences. And it is, the pictures don't do it justice as far as the cramped space, as far as the offices, and the labyrinth of twists and turns to move around in that building. Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
This is kind of a newbie question, probably, but you said there were needs assessments done in 2000, 2008. What, was there anything accomplished after that? So you did the needs assessment and then...
It was. The needs assessment, yes. The needs assessment really allows, it's easy for me to say, you know, the rooms aren't big enough, it's not accessible by ADA. Thompson and Litten really looked at all the building codes, any kind of security standards, and, because the needs assessments are really thick, that let us know such things as, we don't get enough fresh air into the building, there's not enough natural light. We have a ramp out front, but it only gets to the front door. You won't be able to go to any of the bathrooms, you won't get into the facility. The square foot needed per person in the building is like half. By no means should somebody be in an office that's about the size of this podium. That's really what the needs assessment kind of gives the board, kind of heads up as to how many we want to personnel. And I, I guess because of administration changes from 2008, we're now to the next step, because we're following a step-by-step guide that's given to us by the Department of Civil Justice, says the needs assessment's done, and then now we'll go to the planning study. Because in theory, if we follow all their steps, in the end, when construction's finished, we get a 50% reimbursement for cost of construction, a certain percentage of startup costs. So we're following their steps, which can be time-consuming.
Anyone else?
So you're thinking of, you're thinking of keeping it where it is?
Yes.
And just like more going for a renovation or addition? I mean, it's been a long time since I've been there. I went there when I was first on the board and took a tour, but I was trying to imagine, like, can you really...
It hadn't changed any since then.
What can you really...
We have quite a few, quite a bit of acreage behind the facility, and a lot of facilities, because they really want to stay where they are, do a phased build. So we would probably do dormitory, public kitchen, build that in the back. Once that's completed, we would move everything over, and actually, administration would take up some of the rooms as offices. We would renovate the front to bring it for administration. Our goal is to renovate.
So then you can keep using it as you're fixing and doing?
Absolutely.
That makes sense. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, Mr. Young.
We'd love to have you as a visit. Have a good one.
Thank you, Joe.
And the next item is MPO expansion, and Mr. Brewer, I believe, will address us.
Dan's going to walk us through this item. This is a fairly new item that has come to us and some of our neighbors over the last month or so, so we wanted to bring you up to speed on this issue.
Good evening. I'm going to put my glasses on so I can see how to get the slideshow here. All right. Here we go. The, wait a minute, need to do... I haven't got it yet.
Click the second one over from the left.
Here comes help.
Transition. There you go. From beginning.
There we go.
That's, that's important.
Thank you, Josh.
All right. Thank you, Josh.
They give you a little history, of course. MPO is a transportation policymaking organization for regions with an urbanized population greater than 50,000. And boundary is based on the urbanized area is determined by the Census Bureau, and it will contain the entire urbanized area plus any surrounding areas that are expected to become urbanized in the next 20 years. And of course, we did another census in 2010, and as a result of that, most of the city of Bradford and a portion of Pulaski County met the urban threshold and also connected into, to the MPO along an urban area, very, very thin urban area along Route 11.
About the width of a road, isn't it?
Just barely. And so those areas need to be incorporated into the MPO. And there are also some other areas in Montgomery County that are going to require modification of the, the boundary as well. What do we need to do? The first thing is, well, there are three things. One, we need to establish a new study area based on the criteria you just gave you. And then we will need to revise bylaws of the MPO and establish a new memorandum of understanding with the governor's office. These requirements are requirements that are in federal law. They're not anything we made up, the state made up. They're what you have to do for being an MPO. The current study area, here's a picture of it, and you can see it does not include all of Montgomery County, ends at Eller Road, Luster's Gate Road area, goes out to the top of the mountain along Route 11. Does go over as far as the river and where we border Pulaski County and the city of Bradford. The 2010 MPO map, this is one that was put out by the Census Bureau, which says what the urban area is, is the area that's shown in... the urban area is, is the area that's shown in red. The area in the tan color is the previous map for the existing MPO. The areas, you can see the Radford-Pulaski area.
To the left?
Left of the slide. And those are the areas that we have to work on primarily. And we will go through a couple of the others in Montgomery County as well. City of Radford, that's the only area that was, did not meet the urban population threshold was in the vicinity of the industrial park off of Route 232, exit 105. The areas like that, you probably will include just so you don't have a hole in the city. You don't want everything except one little area to be within the MPO. And then this highlights a fair lawn area and the area, New River, New River area on the left.
I was going to say, Dan and I, we sent a letter a month or so ago to the two administrators, to David Ridpath and to Pete Huber. And Dan and I had the opportunity to meet with Dan, or with David and Peter today. And what they'll be looking to do in the coming weeks is have meetings with their elected officials to make them aware of this change. And I think one of the main things that, as Dan pointed out earlier, and as we tried to point out today, is this is, this is not something we just cooked up. This is something that is dictated by census blocks and data. And so I'm sure Dan's going to talk in just a minute about how, how the census also affected Montgomery County and our involvement in the MPO with Roanoke. So there's a little bit of, little bit of information that everybody has to digest. And Dan and I agreed today that we'll be glad to go to a joint work session with Pulaski and Radford in July to help, help their boards better understand this as well.
Okay. It said there were several areas of Montgomery County we needed to focus on. This is an area north of Christiansburg bypass. You can see that there are three small little areas along the bypass before the boundary is crosshatched. Crosshatched area was pretty much confined to the corporate limits of Christiansburg, did not venture on the other side of the bypass. So you have those areas that now have to be added, but you also want to look at those other census block areas and see what areas may be growing in the next 20 years so you can have a nice, nice smooth boundary. And we would be looking to the affected jurisdiction, in this case, Montgomery County, to make that recommendation as to where the actual study area boundary should be. You don't want to, don't want to have it too big or in areas that, that you do not envision any additional growth. But you do want to try to cover the areas where, where population could increase. The next area, this is in the Fallen Branch area. And the area along in front of the school and across Parkway Drive, two small areas that, that we'll have to, that we'll have to come into the, the new MPO study area. And it may be beneficial also to include the industrial park, something like, like that. But once again, be looking to Montgomery County and what they envision in their comprehensive plan about development in that area to establish the exact boundaries. And last but not least, to the far right-hand sides, three little census blocks that are going down Mount Pleasant Road. And the good news, bad news on that is the census blocks surrounding those, in most cases are, are very, very big and go into very rural areas. And it may not be anything more that we do other than something like that. But once again, be looking, planning department, Steve's got a lot of work to do. One area that is not in the MPO and has no changes, but since we're looking into a boundary change, now's the time to look at it, is the area at 177 Tyler Road. The portion in that is crosshatched is currently in the MPO. You can see where Roger Woody's development, that particular part is within the MPO. If you look across the road where the other development slated to occur, not in the MPO. Also some residential area in behind the rest area, the northbound rest area. And some of that area may develop certainly something for the county to look at and see whether there's interest in expanding the MPO in that, that particular area. Other things we're also going to do is, since we have to revise bylaws and do the memorandum of understanding with the governor's office, we'll look at the current structure, see if that's the correct operating structure if we want to change. Right now, three localities are represented equally by an appointed and elected official from each, each of the three localities. The other voting member is VDOT in Salem, Richard Kaywood. Do we want to continue that structure? Or there are other POs in the state that do proportional voting, proportional fees. There is a cost always. So those are the sorts of things that we'll be looking at in the coming months. All of this has to be done by March of next year. We have to go through this process, get concurrence with the governor's office and have the new MPO accepted by federal highways by March of next year. And this is the one that, that really brought about our discovery about the MPO here growing is Craig had asked me something about the expansion of the Roanoke MPO into the, across into Montgomery County and the Ellison-Lafayette area. And looking at that, I came across the, the expansion that we had, that we're, we're involved with here now. Working with Montgomery County GIS, we've identified the area that has to be included in the Roanoke MPO. And then they will follow the same process as we're following with Radford and Pulaski and establishing a study area, what that outline should be, what Montgomery County's participation is going to be on the Roanoke MPO. Likewise, that, that process needs to be, need to be wrapped up by next March, March I've run through that pretty quickly, but if anybody has any questions, I'm, I'm through with what I have to say.
Mr. Brewer?
You know, sitting here thinking about the Ellison-Lafayette area there, and I've been a part of Roanoke, Roanoke's MPO. Will we have representation on that MPO?
Yes.
And vice versa? Will the city of Radford and Pulaski County have representation?
Yes.
On ours?
Yes.
It'll be more regional after when you get in there. There'll be five, five local governments there. Pulaski, Montgomery County, city of Radford, and the towns of Blacksburg and Christiansburg.
Unfortunately, Pulaski County probably won't carry the weight of Montgomery County since they're just a small entity with the Montgomery County. You maybe haven't figured it out yet, but I would hate to think that representatives from Pulaski County would carry the weight for.
Well, actually, the way the current MPO was set up is it's one jurisdiction, one vote. And we had some discussion with the two administrators about that this afternoon. At least with the current MPO structure, that's worked relatively well. And as we were explaining to them this afternoon, what we do is the portion of the administrative cost that each locality has to bear as part of the, as part of the funding process, rather than proportionate based on population. We've just, right now, we've got four entities, right, four Blacksburg-Christiansburg?
Three.
Three. We just divide whatever the, whatever the amount is by three, and each jurisdiction gets one vote. And that has worked well. I think, you know, as Pulaski and Radford look to come in, one of the things they may be concerned about is if it was proportional. You're right, they would, they would have a small.
Well, the same thing would go with the Ellison-Lafayette area, whom we got the Roanoke City, I wouldn't, Roanoke, Roanoke's MPO. I wouldn't think that that little area would carry a whole lot of weight with the Roanoke's MPO.
Well, what, what they did, they have a similar situation that happened after 2000 census with Bedford County. And they took in a small section, they had taken a small section of Bedford County. And, and they, Bedford County has one vote versus the others having two. And in the, in the, that case as well, is there was not, since they were so small in relation to Roanoke County, Roanoke City, they didn't, they didn't have any financial commitment that they had, Bedford County didn't. Likely to follow the same pattern here.
Now, I've had, I've had just a very casual conversation with Wayne Strickland over in Roanoke. And again, we've got to go through the same thing with them as Radford and Pulaski are having to do with us. But I, our contribution to that side will probably be minimal. And, but that, that's a lot of discussion. You know, one of the first things that came up was, well, we won't be the Blacksburg-Christiansburg Montgomery, Montgomery area MPO anymore. In all likelihood, we'll probably look at calling it the New River Valley MPO or, or something.
Be easier to say than, but.
Blah, blah, blah.
It'd be a lot easier to say.
Any other questions or comments?
This is certainly a work in progress, and we'll keep you guys posted on how things are moving forward. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions.
Mr. Gabriel has a question.
Yeah, just kind of related to what, what you were saying, Craig. What's the timeline for, for determining these, these boundaries for the study areas and things like that? And the new constitution for the board and?
Well, the policy board, the MPO, if you will, has tasked the technical advisory committee to work on that and make a recommendation. We would hope that that would be at the August MPO meeting, judging from past history on trying to get that memorandum of understanding through the governor's office. We need all the time we can get. So, but we hope to have it something by August.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you.
The next item on our work session is request for tax exemption on the Mountain Valley Charitable Foundation for the old Ellison Fire Station. And who wants to present that?
I'll start and then look to staff if we need any additional input. We've had two requests for tax exempt status in the last six months. One came from Mountain Valley Charitable and one came from the Forva Group. And we're going to talk about that one subsequent to this. With the Mountain Valley Charitable Foundation, as you're aware, they're a nonprofit organization in eastern Montgomery County. They've requested an exemption for real, for exemption from real estate tax for personal property located at 1870 Big Spring Drive, which is the old Ellison Fire Station and the adjacent parcel. As you're aware, their intent is to use that property for a thrift store and food pantry. The fiscal impact to the county appears to be approximately $2,200 a year based on an 87 cent tax rate. The value of the property, according to the tax records, is $217,200. As you're aware, the county sold that property to the, to the foundation for $5,000 simply because there were a number of boundary issues with the property. And of course, the, the building is in significant need of rehabilitation, which the foundation has agreed to do as part of their investment. The two alternative staff identified with these. First one would be the board may want to consider scheduling a public hearing to hear public comment on whether to grant the exemption if you desired. The other alternative was to not, to deny the request. The recommendation from staff on this item was that when the county issued the RFP in May of last year for the sale of the property, one of the items that we included in the RFP was that it was the county's desire for the purchaser of the property to maintain that property on the tax rolls of the county. There was no commitment in that, but that was one of the desires that was expressed in the RFP. And recognizing that we had that, staff's recommendation is that the request be denied. But again, we certainly recognize that's a board call and wanted to bring it to you guys tonight for discussion as to how you'd like for us to address it.
Any discussion? Yeah, a few things. One is, is a pretty fictitious assessment. You know, I think they paid really all that we worth because unless they get the relief from the state highway department, they really can't put anything in there.
They don't own the corners. You're right.
So it might be worth less than $5,000 if we have to turn it down. And we, you know, I'm looking for kind of what's fair, and we have a lot of things going in one direction seems anymore rather than passing it around the county. We just, last month or, or it might've been six weeks ago, passed a summer type thing for the masons over in Price's Ford. A brand new building that they were going to build and a brand new piece of land and the whole thing. But that, we're now here with flying colors. And here we've got a, a group of people that are willing to furnish space for a food bank. And we're going to tell them that they're going to have to pay taxes on it. My suggestion would be for the county to get in line and decide where they want to put the food bank down there. Because it's in, that's something that 140, 150 families, not individuals, but families use every month. And so if, if we're going to have a staff And so if we're going to have a status quo, and we can take the Masons, and I've got nothing against the Masons at all, it's a good organization as far as I know, I've never been a Mason, but it's, they pay no taxes, and we sit here and let them go through, just settle precedence for if you're exempt from taxes, you're exempt from taxes, and then we take them, and I don't know exactly where all their money goes, but I do know that the Mountain Valley Charitable Association is nothing but a, what is it, C-3?
501(c)(3).
501(c)(3). It's done nothing but an arm to take in the money that people want to donate through them and give out, I believe it's six, I believe the number was six, what do you call them?
Scholar.
For schools?
Scholarships.
Scholarships, went out the window. Gave out six scholarships for high school children, and you can check all you want to check, and there's nothing but good comes out of them, because all they're doing is having a conduit for the money to come in and put it back out for good. They don't lack any. They volunteer their work. So if you've got something like that in your community or even in your whole jurisdiction of what this county's about, then you should be jumping up and down and saying, man, we're certainly glad to have them, and we, you know, yeah, if they can get everything they want, that building might be worth somewhere up in around $200,000. But they're going to have to buy it. They're going to buy the stuff next door, they're going to, I don't know what they'll have to do with VDOT, whether they'll ever get use of it or not, and all of that may go up in smoke.
Can you explain the issue with the VDOT? You've mentioned that a couple of times. I wasn't on the board when that came up, and the property was sold to them for $5,000.
Right. One corner of that building is on VDOT right of way.
Actually, I think it's actually two. It's the...
Well, at least one corner.
Yeah, the, when VDOT was granted the rights of way for the roads many years ago, they took big chunks, and I don't think anybody really realized until we got to looking at the ability of the county to sell that building and had a survey done that if you're facing the fire station, the two left and right corners where 460 is now and the old 460, it's kind of, it's almost a triangle that cuts into the parking lot, almost into the building that's in the VDOT right of way, and it's been that way for years. It's, you know, as long as it was operating as a fire station, it really wasn't an issue, but once we decided, county decided to sell the property, that's something that they'll have to get cleared before it can be rezoned for use as a thrift store, and I have, has there been...
It's already rezoned, but yeah, it's a cloud on the title.
So at any point in time, VDOT could say move the building or cease the assistance.
Well, they could, yes.
But I think it's an area that they're old right of way, isn't it? So there's hope that they will vacate that right of way.
Yeah, it's...
It's not their new current...
They're certainly trying to get...
Yeah, they're trying to get vacated, but it's still...
Get relieved. And they might get, but they certainly may not too, so, you know, when you do VDOT, you don't know.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Gray, I see two different issues with the Masons and the Mountain View Charitable Organization. One, when we discussed it as a board to sell the old fire station down there and got two or three definite appraisals and so forth, that it was like the consensus of the board that that piece of property would be turned back over and placed back on the tax rolls, the reason why, I guess it was sold dirt cheap. The Masons over there didn't buy their almost able property from this county dirt cheap. We didn't have any agreement with the Masons when they bought their property, that they didn't buy it from us, probably if they had bought it from us, we would have probably said, well, we'd like to see it back on the tax rolls, or something along those lines. So I see two different issues here. I see an issue where it was county property, and we made a really great deal with the people down there for $5,000 for a big building.
Not to have to tear it down.
Well, buy or be wired, you know, when you get it, and we're hoping to work with VDOT to get this piece of property, and I remember doing a couple of things with some houses there or some people close to it, that we voted on something down there to help them out. So I see two different things here. When the Masons got their property, they didn't get it from Montgomery County, one old school property, one old fire station.
But all they had was, all they had built was a lot.
Yeah.
They built a house, just like you'd go build a house. That's what we gave them permission to do that we wouldn't cut, that we wouldn't tax. So, yeah, they had, it was completely something that could have been taxed, because they had the land, they had no building on it. And like I said, I don't have anything against Masons, Lord knows, but the facts are the facts, that they built that after the fact.
Yeah, I mean, the facts are the facts, and the facts are, it was the consensus of this board, if I recall, that whoever got it, we want it back on the tax rolls. And I think when we was trying to sell it and the people came for it, I thought it was great, a great idea, they're supposed to be going to put, what, $100,000 in the building to rehab it and do so forth, so much with it. So my heart goes out to them, I hate, it's off to the good things that they do, but when you're thinking back to the property and what it was sold for and so forth, and yep, we need to see it back on the tax rolls, because at one time, they wanted to rent it from us, to lease it from us, and we said, no, we don't want to be landlords, because we went through a whole hodgepodge of discussions and everything about disposing of the property, and because when they came, just, well, why can't we just lease it from the county? Well, the first thing, the county don't want to be landlords in bitterschmottler for, you know, insurances and so forth and upkeep. So that's my take.
My only concern was, I asked Craig earlier today about the thrift stores, YMCA thrift stores in Blacksburg, if they're tax exempt.
The YMCA is tax exempt, granted by the state, like the Masons are, the Masons are granted exemption by the state, whenever any land they own, then becomes exempt.
And the thrift store in Blacksburg is operated as a part of...
It's owned by the YMCA, who is exempt.
And the YMCA is one to run.
The one in Ellison.
So, yeah, so how, yeah, how does that work?
It's whoever the owner of the property is. Yeah.
Okay, so it wouldn't be their own YMCA thing then? It's like a, I'm trying to figure out what the difference is.
The difference is, is Mountain Valley Charitable Foundation is not tax exempt, real estate that they own. They're eligible for tax exempt status so long as the use is put for charitable use, which they're proposing, but this board has to grant them exemption. There's certain entities that are automatically exempt, like a church, like the Masons, like the state property, federal property, local property, it's all exempt without any action by the local government. You have no say, the state's already granted them exemption. And then there's certain other properties the states have granted exemption prior to that constitutional change some years ago, when, if you remember, where when you first got on the board, when one of these entities came to us for exemption, we would have to say, we're in support of it, but then it would be shot up. The Richmond General Assembly actually granted them exemption. Well, they got sick of doing that, and they said, look, counties, we're going to let you do it so long as they meet these criteria. And it's on a property-by-property basis, you can't grant them exemption on everything they own, you can only grant them exemption on specific parcels or specific personal property as a specific parcel, but they have to be used for, like charitable use, historical use, parks use is eligible use, there's one or two others, but it's all in that same vein.
And my biggest question here tonight is what are we going to do with the food bank? Food bank. What are we going to do, where are we going to put the food, and how are we going to distribute it? It's something that we've taken on as the people of this county have taken on. It's been running now for probably eight, nine years, and every couple of years, they have to move somewhere else. So we've had it in every church that there is down there. We got it in the old school building with no facilities. At the present time, they're going to tear that down here shortly. So where are we going, how are we going to service these people that are in need?
Anybody else have any?
I would like to ask a couple more questions about the discussion about the fee of $5,000 sales price, and the board voted unanimously to say, okay, but we want this to go on the tax rolls. That was discussed?
It was, it was just...
If it were discussed, it was discussed separately, because I never heard them, then I know it.
It was, it was discussed as part of the discussion about surplusing the property because I think when we talked about surplusing the property, one of the things staff had mentioned in the RFP that went out for proposals was that the county would like to see the property returned to the tax rolls. There wasn't a commitment to do that, but that was in the RFP.
Anybody else?
So what you're looking for, you're looking to see, do we want to just make a decision either or, or do we want to have a public hearing on it? That's what you're looking for?
Yes, ma'am. Staff's looking for direction in terms of if that, if it's something that you think you would like to consider, then we would recommend that you call for a public hearing to get citizen input.
And you also direct me to draft the ordinance?
Right.
And the ordinance is what the public hearing will be on? The ordinance would be granting them exemption for real estate at that address plus personal property.
And you can have the public hearing and still deny the request if that's the will of the board, or you can just say no.
The reason we brought up, we didn't want to bring an ordinance if the consensus of the board was not to move forward.
Ma'am?
Just a props clarification, so what happens if VDOT denies them building by the space?
Then they've got a building that they don't have clear title to.
Which means?
Well, means VDOT could legally make them move it. That's the worst-case scenario for them. They could bring a court action to say, move it. The only way you can move is tear it down.
So should we be doing this at all until we know that?
Well, I, you know, I mean, that's the worst case, we don't know what VDOT's going to do.
Where are they in that process? I assume they've contacted VDOT.
They are, they have been talking to VDOT, putting paperwork and this type thing, I don't know. You know, when you first start talking to VDOT or any big organization like that, you might just be stirring up something that they had not paid attention to and didn't know it was that way, and just because they can say, you got to tear it down. Or they may say, okay, we'll donate it to you, means it's a good call.
Yeah, it's, VDOT has generally been supportive of that, but I'm sure, you know, I certainly couldn't tell you with any certainty whether they will be in this case or not, I don't know. That call's made in Richmond, it's not made in Salem.
I just wonder how much of this is a moot point? I mean, if VDOT comes back and says, you got to tear the building down, I mean...
Well, they own the building now, so they're going to have to do whatever VDOT says.
And I think the reason the request came from Mountain Valley at this time is, and I included it in your packet too, they are, they're doing a tremendous amount of work to try to do some fundraising, to provide the funds to renovate this, and they're, to my knowledge, they're moving forward with their plans, assuming that at some point through the bureaucracy, they'll get the clearance with VDOT to be able to keep doing that. But I think one reason they made the request at this point in time is that's just one more hurdle they'd like to clear off their list.
Could I ask one follow-up, sorry?
No, no.
Were they invited, just out of curiosity, were they invited to attend the public hearing?
Well, this is a work session.
Your work session, I'm sorry.
They were notified, Michael Hempel did indicate that they had a conflict with tonight, but I also let him know that there wasn't going to be any decisions tonight as far as, this was just a work session for information for the board, so.
I've never really negotiated too much with VDOT, but if they say, well, Montgomery County has recognized us and given us tax exempt status, is that going to help them potentially in getting the easements? Do you see what I'm saying, as a negotiating tool?
Well, they certainly hope that that will help them, but you know, you don't know whether it will or not.
Yeah. Man, the best thing in their favor is it's the old right of way, the old 460 right of way, I think.
So it's more of the back half, back corner of the building?
Yes, it's like what's sitting out on 460 that we drive on now, that would be, they'd have big problems. But I mean, they're back, they're on the old right of way, so there's a chance VDOT may...
I think when we, when we did the survey, didn't we discover, or didn't the post office across the road have the same issue?
Right.
That the line cut right through the parking lot of the post office.
You know, there's also an issue down the Ellison Elementary School.
Right.
The ball fields that are currently there are in the old VDOT right of way.
Yeah, sometimes you want to look because you're afraid of what you're going to see, but...
You know, you never know how many worms are in them drawers.
Yeah. We found, we did a survey because we're currently working on getting that property ready for market, and there's a big, so we're trying to get rid of that title problem. That thing's been there since...
Whenever the school was built, yeah.
All right, from the conversation, it sounds like we may want to consider a public hearing?
I think we need to have a public hearing, I think we need to be thinking if we're not going to do that, if all things go south on us, what are we going to do with food bank? I mean, that is a big, big question when you've got that many people depending on you every month in order to exist, because they are the poorest of the poor.
Marty, how much work goes into the proposed ordinance? I mean, that's something you're going to draft, right?
Yeah, it's not, it's not...
It's not a big deal? Okay.
No, we don't have any connection to the food bank.
Now, the food bank is a charitable thing.
Yeah.
It's not a county charitable thing, but what Gary's saying is he just wants to know where it's going to go, because he's been wanting to know forever.
Yeah, you know, since the school said they're going to have this going down, I've been trying to figure out where it's going to go, so they finally figured it out. If they can get this building down there, and they didn't have to put no whole lot of money into it, then they could give them the space they need in order to run the food bank out of. So...
And again, just to make clear from staff's perspective, the reason we recommended denial was that was part of the discussion when we did the RFP, but certainly recognize the board has the right to change their mind, so.
Well, when is VDOT going to make up their mind? I think that would be really thoughtful to have that...
Well, you can't ask that question.
All right, so we could do all this, and they, but they can't start doing anything until they have a clear title, correct?
Well, they can do it, but every time they do something, it's...
They're at risk.
They're at risk.
They're at risk.
They can do all they want to, but you know, if VDOT suddenly wants to play hardball for some reason...
So how are...
They wouldn't be able to get a one...
So is the protocol proper then for us to be doing something when we don't know that it has a clear title? I mean, is that what we normally would do? I mean, I don't know the legal thing.
I mean, they have a clear title, they have an encroachment. I mean, they own it, but their building's also sitting on VDOT's property.
It's true, it's an encroachment.
Encroachment is VDOT can make them move it.
Yeah, it's not...
So they own the property, it's not, it's not the issue, it's a cloud on their title, it's a big cloud on their title.
I guess title insurance never would have helped them, huh?
No, well, they, well, no, they were told, when they bought it, we told...
As is.
As is. And we told them about the encroachment, I mean, I think we did.
Yes, we did.
We started the discussion.
Yes, we did, we showed them the map with the lines on it.
Well, I guess the question is...
I just, I mean, I think the other... I just, I mean, I think the other thing we need to consider, and I'm not saying this in a positive or negative ways, that this is going to come up with other properties that we're going to surplus. I'm thinking, for example, Old Prices Fork Elementary, for one, perhaps other properties as well. And so, what we do now, we'll, like it or not, probably set a precedent that we're going to have to deal with later on. That's not to say that we can't change our mind later on, but I will put that out there.
And as staff develops RFPs, unless the board tells us otherwise, we're always going to put in those RFPs for surplus property that we'd like to see it back on the tax rolls.
I think, on my experience on the board, and, you know, us long timers anyway, we've had two maybe issues with VDOT and giving up right-of-ways and abandoning roads. And one of them was over in Ellison several years ago. And it took a while, but VDOT gave them to us. So, you know, one of them was going up into a new subdivision where they had three houses, and they wanted to take it off because it was all family.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and they gave it to us, you know, so hopefully they will do it.
Knowing when we'll get a VDOT answer.
But again, the question is, do we want to do a, Gary says yes on the public hearing? Annette?
What?
Do we want to go ahead with the public hearing?
Sure.
Do we need a motion, or?
Yeah, the resolution be good to just direct staff to advertise-
Prepare the resolution for work session ordinance.
All right, the consensus of the board is-
And you have to make a decision within a certain period of time after the public hearing, right?
Right, and we have to make a decision. And I'm not the public hearing, but we'll do that after we come out of work session, I guess.
There's really no time, it's the only timeframe. You guys have a policy on these in place, and that policy says that the applicant has to apply by July 1st. And so, they've done that, so that the deadline's been met. And the taxes, the exemption wouldn't go into place anyway until January 13th. We're not talking about this year.
Right, so you've got, you've got time to contemplate your decision.
Exactly. They've met their deadline now, it's in your court.
All right, it looks like we've got some people agreeing to go in the public hearing, and we'll-
I think we need to do a resolution, prove resolution.
But we can't do that until after we come out of work session?
Correct.
All right, I'll leave that up there. All right, the next item is the-
There we go, request for exemption on-
Request for exemption on the Friends of the River of Virginia.
Well, this is, as I mentioned, we've had two requests over the last six months for tax exempt request status. This is the one from the Friends of the Rivers of Virginia. I think you're familiar with this property. It's the 45 acres that's owned by the Friends of the Rivers adjoining Strubbs Creek and Prices Fork area. This property was conveyed to Forva in a deed of gift from Ann Hayden Yates in December 2010, following the county's decline of the property donation for use as a future park. The 2012 value of the property is approximately $155,000. At a current rate of 87 cents, the taxes that are generated from this parcel are approximately $1,348 a year. The two alternatives, again, that staff, actually, three alternatives on this one. One was to consider granting a tax exemption for the property after you schedule a public hearing to hear public comment. The second, the second option is to deny the request. The third option is to reconsider the tax exemption once the group has developed a public park on the site. Staff discussed this one in detail and, and again recommends denial of the request, primarily due to the fact that there, there is not a formal plan in place, which has been developed and presented to this board regarding the future of the development of the site. And staff feels it would be premature to declare this property tax exempt until some action is taken on the status of the park. That's staff's position.
Mr. Brown?
In, I guess, I've been in the fall or sometime, in listening to Bill Tanger and Randy Lemon, and one statement, when we toured the park, that he had stopped, told a couple citizens out of there, he said, "This place is going to become a park, whether it's a public park or whether it's a private park." And he said it'd be public or private. And what I understand, when we were working through the budget issues and things like that, that they're supposed to come to this board to make some kind of formal presentation about the plans for that, that park down there. I think they've had a couple of neighborhood meetings and things like that, and the people down there are all over the place about whether they want to park or not want to park and so forth. But when it comes to being a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and knowing what park areas that we have now, we don't have adequate, we have staff to even take care of what we have now, we wouldn't take on some wainbridge and, and some of the people around there. I know it's one gentleman who bought us the park. If the county gets it, he wants probably about a hundred thousand dollar fence put around it so it doesn't encroach on his property and so forth. So, I think we ought to deny it until some kind of formal plan or something that we can see that's going to transpire down that park before we grant that status at the, or consider that status at that particular time.
So, ma'am?
Mr. Brown, you're suggesting option three?
Yes.
To reconsider the exemption once they have more formal plans?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, and related to my question about the previous item, was Mr. Tanger of the Friends of the Rivers invited to attend the work session?
He and I have traded voicemails, but specifically about tonight, no, because again, I knew it was a work session for the board and did not contemplate action being taken tonight, but-
Because I would certainly like to hear more detailed plans about this. I honestly think it's a pretty good idea in theory, but I would want to hear specifics about it before I would, I would commit to this.
I, I went over to the, the park that they talked about, and it is fantastic. I went over there and I also talked with some of the folks over at Perrisburg. I talked with Perrisburg Police Department and the Giles Sheriff's Department. And they haven't had any major issues at all down at the park. They did make it handicapped accessible, and it did cost the town of Perrisburg, can't remember the exact number, between 24 and $36,000, but they've got a loop that goes along the river that's about as big as Bissett Park's loop that, that over in Radford. It's, it's impressive. They've got the bathrooms, they're almost a little more like an outhouse type bathrooms with shelters that are maintained by nonprofits. It's, I'm interested in seeing it, but I want to see them make some steps further before. And, and I, maybe we could look at maybe, looking at tax exempt status or a little bit retroactively, if they follow through with the plans, if they are able to move forward with the park and come forward with some specifics, then we might be able to look at this again or revisit it. But I, I want to see some more in concrete before I, I move forward on this.
Anyone else?
Well, this is, I was just going to say, this is just like the first one in that there's not a, we don't have to make a decision in the next meeting or so. And I know, as I said, I've, I've traded voicemails with Mr. Tanger. I know that he had indicated to a couple of the board members that they were going to be approaching staff about coming back to the board for a presentation. But to my knowledge, that's not been, well, it hasn't been scheduled, so it may be a more, the reason I wanted to have this on tonight is those are the only, those are actually the only two requests we've had in my three years of being here, and I wanted to get them both before you in a work session to get some direction on.
If they put it in agricultural, or the, not agricultural, but what, conservation, what would their taxes roughly? Because right now they're about $1,100. If they did that, would they put them around $400, $500 on the property?
What can they?
Can they go in?
There's limits on going into conservation, isn't there?
Or land use?
It has to be, usually looking for a minimum of 100 acres. They went up to 200. And, or it's got to be a pristine spot, or it can join, if it adjoins another easement, they can do that. The tax would be based on the same basis as we use our land use tax, so, for farmers and things. So, whatever that value is, that's where it would be taxed.
Thank you.
The other thing is, I did talk to Mr. Tanger about two or three weeks ago, and he said that, you know, he'd like to make another presentation to the board when we're ready. He wasn't pushing me. I told him, well, we'll discuss it after we get through the budget, and we'll bring it up at one of our agenda reviews and try and set a time that we can, if that's all right with the board. And I agree with Mr. Brown and Mr. Gabriel that we should wait until we have further plans.
One, one further comment. I'm the district representative down there, and I have to listen to the people, okay? Because when some ideals come up about the park, I mean, the little emails, do, 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 and says, we got one way, then complaints us, that road that goes down is one way in. The people who live down in the little cul-de-sac that, yeah, they said, "Our children can ride their tricycles and bicycles, and they can walk to the neighbor's house. If a park gets here, then we're going to be afraid to let them walk on the street and play in the street." Another thing, when we go to work in the mornings, we feel fairly safe with our community, you know, and, and with the homes and things there. And they talk about all these undesirables and made it become a lover's lane, a beer-drinking spot, and, and so forth, you know? So, and then you have some people who live a little bit further from it, not very close to it, "Oh, man, that'd make a wonderful park." Well, it's not in their backyard. So, I basically want what the community want out there, and so they're basically, they're all over the place. And some people, when you look right around the park area, the ones that's not adjacent to it, those are mostly ones that's opposed to it, the ones that's further back, where they don't have to look at it all the time. "Oh, it'd make a wonderful park." Well, the hiking trail and things like this. So, I think we're going to have to really listen and be concerned with what the wishes of the, of the people are out there. And I mean, I'm all for it becoming a private park and not coming into our park system because we just don't have the money and the staff to, to actively take care of it.
But two small, two small things that I wanted to relate to that is one, I think actually Mr. Tuck brought up earlier, is that I would want some research done about Mr. Price, who they're proposing to name it now. And I know there's, there's a couple of my colleagues at Virginia Tech who've written histories of Virginia Tech, we could probably contact them, and they could, they could do maybe a brief presentation about Mr. Price and whether it would be appropriate, just in case there's any skeletons back there that we, we don't want, we don't want to dug up like it was discovered about one of the names of the halls of Virginia Tech recently. The other thing too is that as, I think it was, it was somewhere in the document, I can't find it right now, but it was mentioned that, I believe, maybe it was in the letter Mr. Tanger was talking about turning this over to the Tech Foundation as, as an alternative. And I do not want to see that happen. So, I mean, I don't know if there would be consensus to say that we're not willing to commit to anything right now, but we're interested in hearing more, so that he or the Friends of the Rivers don't, doesn't do something rash from our perspective, and-
I think it butts up to Tech has a couple hundred acres in it, butts up to Tech's property.
Yeah, and I think the Tech Foundation would be chomping at the bit to have that property, so.
I heard from a couple of the residents over there who didn't really want to go to Tech also, so they would prefer it to be a private park or county park to that.
Yeah.
No, 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 private park.
Well, I'm just saying, that's what they said.
And that's what they said.
I got to speak to the few people that told me, so. At any rate, so it sounds to me like this needs to have further information, and we'll try to get them to a presentation, to a delegation down the road sometime, and probably before we get to work on the next budget, which is what, next week?
Pretty close.
Probably about an hour from now, if we get through the work session.
Trying to get their breath in while that's running.
So, all right, if that's everybody's consensus on the board, that's the direction we'll go. Okay? And the next item is donation boxes of consolidated sites.
Do you want to do this one, or you want me to do this? Your presentations are more pleasant than mine.
That's sad, Al. Well, the idea is, we all know, it was discussed at some point about considering putting donation bo, I guess I'm calling them donation boxes, but the idea of being, having the opportunity for citizens to donate to charitable organizations at the consolidated sites. So, we had staff contact a number of the organizations that normally people do make donations to, to inquire as to whether or not they would have interest or ability to be able to do that. So, I have the list here of who we contacted, the Salvation Army, the YMCA thrift shop, Goodwill, the Montgomery County Emergency Assistance Program, and the Humane Society thrift store. Actually, the only group that expressed any interest at all, and they didn't commit to it, but they did express some interest, was Goodwill, who indicated, and I don't know if you all have passed the Goodwill Donation Center across the street, they have these boxes there now that are green and white and blue, and they call them Edgar Boxes. And they're available for citizens to make donations when the site is not open, that sort of thing. And they suggested they may be able to at least test the idea by putting one of those boxes at one of the consolidated sites that may be on their regular routes. I, I think part of the issue for some of the other organizations is they don't have the staff or the mobility to go out to the sites and collect the things that are donated there. The Salvation Army and the Goodwill actually go out and pick up donations from various places. The Salvation Army indicated that they'd had not a good experience with that concept before, and they weren't interested in doing that again. So, at this point, we talked to staff about the sites. We do have space issues with some of our sites. I mean, they could not accommodate any additional boxes there, they're already pretty much filled with the containers for solid waste at this point. So, we've identified those that could actually manage having one of those boxes within the fenced area. If there was interest in placing them outside of the fenced area, the consolidated sites, you might get two more cul-de-sac column, me or Max. So, I guess our recommendation was at this point, if the board wants to pursue this idea, that we would be getting back in contact with Goodwill and see if they want to pursue it at one of the sites, see if they could identify one on their route, and sort of use that as a test case to see how that worked, or were there issues that came up that we would need to address in the long term and some of those kinds of things. So, at this point, we're just looking for direction from the board. And I did attach a map to the back of this summary that sort of shows you where the consolidated sites are. So, what would be the board's pleasure?
I'm just curious.
You, you said something that the possibility of making, putting one outside the fenced area, I wouldn't recommend that, because 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, you could find anything in there around those sites, even some of those sites, when the gates close, I mean, they're locked up. I guess a tenant goes in the morning, they might find eight or 10 bags of trash at the gate. So, if you had, had a box out there, a donation box, if it was allowed outside the fenced in area, I think you could, you never know, that'd be an investigation by the sheriff's department, that'd find a body stuck down in one of them.
I guess you never know, do you?
Bill, if we left it outside the site, it would be a terrible idea. I think that that might have been some of the problems that the YMCA or the Salvation Army had. I'm all for putting it in, trying a couple of them inside the wire. And now, none of these are technically in my district. I go to the one at Prices Fork because I live out in Walton, I go to the one at Plum Creek. Those are pretty large sites also.
Yeah, those four staff felt like could accommodate the box within the area there- Yeah, those four, uh, staff felt like could accommodate the box within the area there. Um, the others are just too small.
Yeah. So, I, I would propose, I guess, that when we come out of work session, that we look at doing it within and, and working with them just to see if the Edgar boxes work. And then if they do, perhaps, uh, we, they can be upgraded to similar sites at, at Buckos across the street. And if, if, if things work out, if it does, it was worth a try.
Well, I think that's part of it, just identifying, you know, is it going to work? Or were there issues that we didn't think about or they didn't think about as well? And that way we can sort of test it on a smaller scale.
I think one of the other issues we discussed was if it's in the, uh, side of the site and people were dropping things off, they would not be able to get receipts there.
All right.
Well, if you've seen one of those boxes, it clearly says on there that you need to come back, you know, or go to, I think they have them at places other than the sites too, and you need to talk to an attendant with Goodwill. So, we'll see how that works. I, I don't know. If, if it becomes an issue where the staff at the site is constantly, you know, approached about wanting receipts and things, we'll know that's an issue and it's a problem that takes away the staff's time from addressing the other things that need to be done at the site. At this point, we would just be, again, we would get back to them and make sure they want to do this and then where would they suggest placing one of those boxes, if that's what everyone on the board wants to do?
I see it kinda limited. They said, uh, something about on their normal route. I mean, I don't see their normal route, uh, down in Allen Valley. It might be, but, uh...
Well, if they may come back and say, none of these four are on our route, I don't know.
That's right.
But, we thought we would see if the board wants to pursue it first, and if so, we'll go in this direction.
We can probably do that with a consensus?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the biggest thing is whether they want it or not.
That's right.
I don't know.
So we'll give them the opportunity. Give them the first word of refusal, how's that?
Well, I appreciate staff has done a lot of work on this. And the other thing that we were gonna, will bring up at a meeting not too far in the future is we do need to talk about the Allegheny Spring, Allegheny Springs Green Box Site. We're not ready for that tonight. One of the things that I would share with you is we have actually hired several new staff members to replace some vacancies in general services. We hired a gentleman named Bill Long, uh, to take David Breeden's place. David left us several months ago. Uh, David was over some of the solid waste operations and, uh, my interaction with Bill so far is he's really sharp. And I wanna give him an opportunity to have a little input on that too. So that's, that'll be coming very soon, but...
Any other comments on this? All right. This is gonna be a good one. De-allocation of VDOT revenue sharing funds.
Well, this one, Steve, I didn't get a chance to talk to you today. Are you prepared to help with this or do you wanna? This is one that, uh... Well, this one started out as a fairly simple request from VDOT. And the more questions we asked, the more confused we all got. And, um, what we've been asked to do, VDOT's going through projects that are completed, um, that fun, that there's still additional funds, uh, that are allocated for projects that have been completed. And if I'm correct, we've got four projects currently in the works. Steve, you might wanna help with this because I, I ran between meetings all day and didn't even get it...
There's actually three now.
Thank you, okay, well, save me, please.
Yeah, uh, there's six projects on the list and, and three of those have been completed and three are yet to be completed. So, um, the Allegheny Springs project, uh, for the Box Culver, Yellow Sulfur Road, and Willis Hollow are the three that are currently active projects. The ones that have recently been completed are Craig's Creek, Stanley Road, and Woodrow Road. And what happened was with Stanley and Woodrow, there was a little bit of money left over. And what's being proposed is that leftover money be shifted to those other projects to, uh, fill some gaps. And I've got the numbers, if we're gonna get into the numbers, but...
Yeah, there's, there's eighty-six, approximately eighty-seven hundred dollars left on the Woodrow, Woodrow Road project. Hundred and seventy-five, three seventy-eight on Stanley Road, which is a total of a little over a hundred and eighty-four thousand of monies that they wanna de-allocate. But what, uh, they're proposing is to take of that hundred and eighty-four thousand, take eight thousand one hundred and fifty-three to transfer to the Allegheny Springs project to cover a shortfall that has arisen in that project. I think that was because of the Box Culver, wasn't that?
Well, when they put it out in the bid, it came in a little bit over what they had projected.
Right.
So they wanted to, to take some of that money and fill that gap. So they had enough to meet the, the bid that came in and be able to award that.
And then the other hundred and seventy-five, eight seventy-seven, transfer to continue to, to do work on Yellow Sulfur Road. So, um, again, VDOT did point out to us that we could not take that money and put it on a new project, but it, it, it could only be allocated to projects that were already in the works.
Right, and you, you can't really, if you have a million dollars left, you can't put it on a project that's already got a million extra. So, it, it has to be one that actually needs some additional funds. That's Willis Hollow, they're projecting that that does not need any additional money. So that one, uh, they're saying is good, has enough money right now, um, to go forward. So, the two that still, uh, needed some funds were Allegheny Springs and then, uh, Yellow Sulfur. And Yellow Sulfur's a little further out, so that one's still, you know, got some questions about how much, you know, the, the actual construction cost will be on that one. So they felt pretty safe with the, the hundred and seventy-two thousand on that.
I was not comfortable giving VDOT direction on that without the board's input. So that's why we added this as a work session tonight.
Yeah, then, I guess the other option is if you don't transfer it, then it goes, goes back to the, the fund, the, the general fund, see, then you lose, lose the fifty percent match.
Right, the, that's, that's true. There would be, if we don't do anything and it's de-allocated, the funds do come back to the county, but then you basically have to get in line again to get funds matched.
Right, and if you happen to go up short on one of the projects, well, Allegheny Springs, we already know is short. So we need to, to...
Right, we need to at least address that.
Fill that gap and then, you know, if, if Yellow Sulfur comes up short, then, um, if we don't have any surplus, then you're, you're, you have to basically reapply and add for a larger amount, so...
I don't think we ought to lose the fifty percent.
No, I don't think we should either.
To Yellow Sulfur Road, what is the, you know, when you give that to them, that's in addition to what we've already had on there, is that correct?
Yes.
What we've already done? So what does that mean for Yellow Sulfur Road?
I, I think what, what they've kinda said is that would give them a little more flexibility if they got in some areas they needed to widen the road or, or straighten out a curve a little bit. It'd give them a little bit of buffer, um, to be able to...
On the part that they're working on?
Correct. They're not changing the scope of the project or the length of the project, but if they needed some extra mon, money to put in another pipe or to, to widen the curb or something, that would give them some, a little bit of buffer to, to go ahead and be able to put that into the project.
So what they're working on at the moment, this would go toward that?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, it wouldn't change the, the...
Doesn't change.
And if they didn't need the money...
Yeah, and you bet your bet if you put it down there.
If they didn't need the money, are they gonna come back to us again?
That's what I, yeah.
If that's, yes, if they don't...
That was my next question.
If they don't need the money, it does come back.
Yeah, yeah, if any of these other projects, the, the three remaining projects have funds left over, they're, they're gonna come back and ask the same thing at the end and say, you know, where do you want us to put it? But we have to have a project to be able to put it on.
Again...
Does the board have to take an action?
No, they... Well, VDOT, VDOT, um, when they contacted me, they were just looking for consensus, or they were looking for, I guess, the blessing of the county to, to move forward with this. I got the impression that they could do it based on my authorization, saying it's okay. But the more we talked, the more these numbers started moving and I said, whoa, I'm not, I'm not gonna do this one by myself, I need the board to support this.
They cleared up a little bit more today, that there's really only three projects and, and really only two that you could put the money on because one of them doesn't need any more money.
Only thing that I'm kinda wary of is, uh, I guess it's six thirty-seven Allegheny Springs Road. You know, that was all in one part, and then it got down to three parts, and then it went to four parts. And the one part that they put it over into was, uh, right up front the last time I seen anything from VDOT. And, you know, that was, you know, they, they did like a tenth of a mile, and then there was a bridge, so they didn't do it, they didn't fix the bridge. But then they were gonna do just, uh, about a half a mile, but then they come out and said they faded, they, uh, did it, uh, tar and gravel, that they could get it all the way up to, uh, the other side of Lavender. And I just wonder what happened to that project. And I don't know that you have the explanation, I would tell me.
No, I don't know the answer to that either.
No, it was, you know, it was right on top and now it's not anywhere to be seen. Must've gone off to lake fishing.
I do, I did hear today that the expected, expected completion for Willis Hollow is August of next year. Uh, pardon, I'm sorry, August of this year, sorry.
Because that actually is there.
Yeah, yeah, they're working there. So that one's, at least that one's moving.
Yeah. Although, I had three different people tell me now that, uh, you know, they were gonna do like, uh, a half a mile, and then it went to, mm, something tenths of left out. And according to these people now, they're, they're about three hundred foot left out. So, they didn't go as far as what they said they were going. And each of that, of course, that was the people that was working on it, was telling them that's what, where they were supposed to go to. They didn't know why it would go the extra. But, I don't know, uh...
Mr. Brown?
Don't think about VDOT anymore.
So, VDOT, VDOT really thinks they're gonna need a hundred and seventy-five thousand additional funds that they can use on that road? Um, right just on what they're doing and not expand it at all?
I think they could probably use a lot more than that, uh, on, on the road if they really wanted to, but...
Where they're doing it now?
Yeah, yeah, I think they could certainly find, find ways to, to spend that.
You just want a consensus then?
What I was looking for was consensus from the board so I can let VDOT know that we're okay with them proceeding.
All right, Matt?
I'd say don't hold them up.
All right, you got it.
Thank you, Steve.
Well, that was careless.
Well, it was, yeah, I, I was in several meetings today and I saw an email come in from Anthony Ford at VDOT and it was like, holy, it was a mess. So, thank you, Steve, for bailing me out on that one.
All right, before we go any further, when we're done with our work sessions...
Yes, sir.
We need to make a motion to go out of work session. Been moved in second, a roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair of the lettuce?
Aye. Uh, the next question is, do we wanna take a five-minute break or try to run through it?
Have to do with our, our meeting, what we had.
Make a resolution, yeah.
Have a, a move that we have a public hearing for the Elliston Project.
Request for tax exempt tags.
Yeah, been moved, you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Chair of the lettuce?
Aye.
We'll get that scheduled.
Okay. That was all we're gonna do on the, uh, work session. Do we wanna take a five-minute break or push through it? How much time you got?
Wish, well...
We're gonna have probably spent a little bit of time on the, uh...
We've been meeting for two hours.
Funds.
Take a break.
Take a break, I might go home. You may, if you like.
Yeah, I might go too.
I'd go too. And, uh, the next item on the agenda is addendums, and we don't have any this evening.
No, sir.
The next item is consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion on the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chair of the lettuce?
Aye.
Six ayes.
The next item is new business. And, uh, the first item in new business is resolution approving a fund balance policy for financial reporting.
This is actually a, uh, not necessarily a requirement, but GASB 54, which is a governmental accounting standard, is requiring that fund balances for governmental entities be presented, uh, in different categories and the terminology's a little bit different. When we did the audit, or when, um, Ron Edwards did the audit for June 2011, the financial statements were prepared in accordance with GASB 54. But as part of that, the auditor suggested that we probably ought to adopt a fund balance policy to reflect the, the change. It has no impact on the budget process, it has no impact on the dollars. It's just basically, instead of putting the numbers in two or three buckets, now we have to put them in five or six buckets. That's the best way I can describe it to you. So, it's recommended that the board consider adopting a fund balance policy that reflects what GASB 54 says we have to do. Did I get that right? Thank you.
It just makes everything cleaner.
Right, consistent.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll move adoption, please. Second.
And if you have any other questions, Carol, Carol will be glad to answer them.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye. Aye.
Chair of the lettuce?
Aye.
Six ayes.
So I just had a question. So does that mean like, um, then like, will we get like some kind of paper that has like these categories and has how much or how does it work?
Well, it was actually presented that way in the 2011 financial statements. We, we show all those categories.
So that's the way, that would be the way it would be?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's just supposedly it's to add clarity and consistency among governmental entities. But like all us CPAs, anytime we add clarity and consistency, we just further confuse it, but... Sorry for that editorial comment.
All right, the next item on the agenda is resolution of appropriation of FY 2012, 2013 budget.
Some aid.
Any seconded, any discussion?
No. Um, a couple of things, and I wanna make sure I understand, let me turn that on, that I understand. At the end of the budget that we voted on, and if y'all remember, there was some debate about, uh, the funds. I think at one point in time, Matt suggested, uh, uh, amount be set aside for parks and recreation. And then, I, I think Gary, and there was a debate about how much to set aside. And then, I, I think, as I recall, said, you know, the only thing that we have to vote on at that point in time was the school board budget, so they would know exactly how much they were gonna get. Is that money, and if I remember right, is over a hundred thousand dollars in the general contingencies? Or am I just totally off base?
You are correct.
Okay, all right, I, I just, the, the special line nine sixty, is that where that's at?
It is, and the amount for parks and recreation is one forty-seven, eight sixty-seven. Also included in special contingencies is fifty thousand dollars that we carry for the Comprehensive Services Act in the event that, and we have used it every year prior, um, need additional funds for the mandates. There's twenty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars that's set aside in special contingencies in the event that we need to, um, meet a matching requirement for the state health department if our cooperative share increases. We've set that aside in special contingencies. The other amount is seventeen thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, and that's in the event that we have to match additional funds for the cooperative extension office. We hold those in special contingencies and should those monies be needed, and again with the parks and recreation funds, wants a plan for how those would be expended... with the Parks and Recreation Funds, once a plan for how those would be expended would be put together, it will come back to the board with a resolution then to move it from special contingencies to where it needs to go.
Right. Okay, any other questions or comments?
That answered my, I just wanted to make sure I knew where that money was placed in the appropriations, thank you.
Okay. No other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Nay.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair of Willis?
Aye.
Five ayes, one nay.
All right, the next item.
Uh, no report, Mr. Chair.
County Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I do have several items this evening. First off, after our last meeting and the presentation on the employee self-insurance, or the healthcare self-insurance plan, I realized after talking with several of you, as I shared with Supervisor Biggs, we basically started telling you a story in the middle of the book instead of at the beginning. So, one of the things we're gonna try to do at one of the upcoming meetings is to give you more history about how we got to where we are, and also talk to you about, uh, several other options that have been discussed among staff that we'd like to get some direction from the board on. I, I thought the presentation was good, but that was certainly a, a learning experience that we need to do a better job of, of making sure you guys have all the information, so we're gonna address that. Uh, secondly, I wanted to share a couple of things with tourism, uh, with you, um, several members of the Tourism Development Council, which is the advisory group, uh, that's been formed to work on the tourism initiatives, uh, took a tour of Hartwood down in Abingdon, uh, a couple of weeks ago, had, had a good visit down there. Um, I think most of you know Jack Henselwood, Jack, uh, is a Shawsville native, but he is in charge of the Crooked Road Program, which is an integral part of what they're doing down there at Hartwood, and that's a, that's a great facility, and it's gonna be one that provides a lot of, uh, positive, uh, exposure, bless you, a lot of positive exposure to Montgomery County, we're excited about that. Also, with regard to Tourism Director, the interviews have been conducted, the background checks have been done, and I hope, um, by the end of this week, or at the very, very latest, the first to next week, we'll be offering a, a person of, um, we'll be offering the position of Tourism Director to a candidate, and look forward to getting that rolling along real soon. A couple of reminders, um, our post-legislative dinner meeting will be before our next Board of Supervisors meeting, that'll be at 5:30, uh, on the 25th, and I believe everyone except Delegate Habib is gonna, oh.
Everybody but Senator Edwards.
Okay, everybody but Senator Edwards, I'm sorry, Representative Habib will, will be able to be there, so hopefully everybody can make that.
I, I just had a question about that.
Okay.
Go ahead. Did you have more?
I got a couple more, but go ahead, that's.
Okay. Uh, I was gonna bring this up during my report, I won't be able to make the meeting because I'll be on a research trip for, for my Virginia Tech, um, job, but I was wondering if perhaps, um, staff could compile a list of, um, the local delegates' votes on, um, items of in, specifically related to locality, so that the people here would be prepared for to ask questions about why they voted specifically on.
Sure. That may be something that we can get from VACO too, 'cause I'm sure they tracked how our legislative delegation voted on various bills that affect.
I think that would be really, really good, because then we can ask specifically, like, I know that there were bills in the House of Delegates that concern taking money out of the General Fund to give to transportation that we specifically lobbied against that were voted for, and, um, you know, I have that question, like, you know, if it hadn't been for the Senate, that would've happened, so, things that really affect us, that we really lobbied hard for that didn't happen, it sort of would be neat to know why it didn't.
Yeah, and then, then people could ask, and, and I certainly would personally follow, I wouldn't be able to, to be there, but I would follow up with an email about why.
And we could make sure you, your questions were.
Yeah. Okay, we'll be glad to work on that and try to get that out.
Thank you.
Um, I do appreciate the responses back on trying to set up an extended work session. We are still looking at the 16th and 30th, Supervisor Biggs indicated she couldn't be there on the 16th, so far everybody has seemed to be okay with the 30th, um, so we may look at, uh, trying to, uh, I would ask that you still hold those times as possible dates, because so far, of all the ones we've tried, that's the closest we've come to being able to get nearly everybody available, so we'll continue to work towards that and get more information out. The last thing I wanted to pass out to you, and I believe, and I apologize, Mr. Chair, I believe you sent this out with an email that you sent, the letter from Wendell about the one-time money?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure, uh, this is the letter from, uh, the Board Chairman, uh, to our, um, Chair of the School Board, to our Board Chairman, about, uh, some appropriations, one-time funds. We will, um, be talking about the appropriation of one-time monies, uh, at, at one of the upcoming meetings, technically, we don't have to do that until after July 1st, but we want to make sure that, um, you guys receive this, and so I know the Chair had sent it out in an email, but I had printed it out too, so just wanted to make sure everybody had it. And, that is all I have, sir.
All right, Supervisor Tuck?
Well, one, I want to thank the staff, um, as everyone knows, the collection site idea was something that I mentioned when I ran, I appreciate the work that you guys did to, to follow up and, and see if it works, and I hope, I hope it does, and I appreciate the work, uh, that y'all did. Uh, also, as I mentioned in the last meeting I was here, Ryan Thum is no longer with the Planning Commission, he has moved on, and so we have that vacancy, and I think that's gonna be advertised. Um, and, uh, I'm very proud of my Christiansburg graduate that, uh, graduated, and that's why I wasn't able to come to the meeting, but, uh, when you have your, your number two getting a full ride scholarship to Harvard with a 439 GPA, um, and number one going to Cornell, uh, in the William and Mary Full Ride Scholarship, well, with Roshel Evans, uh, another 150,000, I think the total for scholarships at Christiansburg High School was 1.4 million dollars that were awarded, and so very proud of those Christiansburg graduates.
That's great.
Okay, Supervisor Brown?
I don't think I have a report.
All right, Supervisor Biggs?
Well, I just wanted to remind everyone that this Thursday, June 14th, the government, Government Center that we're sitting in is 10 years old. It's hard to believe that 10 years have passed, it just seems like yesterday we dedicated it, and Senator Massimovich, former Senator Massimovich was the guest speaker, and we actually, um, followed, um, up with, um, we had an open house, and we actually had some of the employees that used to work in this building when it was a factory, um, come and, and, and tour, and it was just a really nice, um, event, and I just, um, I wish we could have a little birthday, but anyway, people can remember it's 10 years old, um, which is also on Flag Day, Thursday, June 14th.
That's right.
Um, along with that, uh, you know, it's always interesting when you envision something being large enough, and 10 years ago, we thought this room was going to be large enough, and we found many times it's not. And with the school board having their meetings in here, they found many times it's not. And there've been situations where we've had people standing up along the sides, and that's not very comfortable to do for a long period of time, there were even situations where we had to get some, um, public safety officers involved in clearing the doors back there because they were blocked, and if there'd been a fire or something, um, that would've been bad, well, during this time, some chairs were put out in, um, outside there, in the area, the open area, and you could hear, but one thing I mentioned to Mr. Metta's, I said, "Well, I wonder, I don't know how expensive this might be, but wouldn't it be nice if we could put a TV screen out there?", and then the people that couldn't fit in here at certain times, that had to sit in the chairs out there, could actually see the meeting and hear it at the same time. I don't know how expensive or hard that would be to do, but I was just thinking of, you know, sort of an upgrade after 10 years, that that might be something we want to think about, um, because we have had more people attending our meetings at certain, at certain times. So that's a suggestion, um, I don't know if you wanna, um, if everyone else felt strongly about, but I thought maybe someone could look into how much that might cost to do. And that's it.
Is that all right with everybody to investigate that?
And, and I remember Randy was asking for a potential TV, I don't know if that's something that we could.
No, he was looking for one downstairs to be able to post the, and what we've suggested back to him is, you could do it with a TV, but you could also do it with a projector that does a PowerPoint on one of the walls downstairs, which would actually be even bigger than a television, it'd be easier to see.
And I would think you'd be able to tie it into your security camera. Your security, you've got, you can put a screen up, or even, you know, a screen like we have drive down here, and you can monitor, just like you do your front door.
You could, yeah, you could.
You know, that might be a, I don't know how to do that, but we could put it in the hand.
Imagine the man in the goof has probably some pretty good ideas too.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Biggs.
Oh, there's one other thing I might mention, um, I think I already mentioned this before, but somebody said that when they watch it on TV, they can't tell who we are, but I don't have that problem, but I know who we are. But, um, these, that, these are really small, but usually they put it like, they're talking, they put the captions, so I don't know why they're focused on looking at this, 'cause this is too small. But I, I thought that the meetings that, um, I've watched, I could tell who people were when they put the caption across, so I don't know, but that was another thing.
Okay.
This is me.
Supervisor Perkins?
Well, I think the TV out there's a good idea, we did it at church and it works fine. So, you know, we, we have an overflow crowd from our sanctuary, and till we can afford a big one, we put a couple TVs out there and, and we also have, um, monitors and it works very well, I mean, you know, and we can hear them too, so, it's, it's a good thing. Um, I was glad that, um, Mr. St. Gene came to give us an update, the airport, I, I do serve on the Airport Authority, and I, I felt it was time that with all of the changes that are taking place there, and they will be monstrous changes, um, the, um, uh, for instance, that, that the things that have to go there are the dairy barns, the whole dairy situation will be moved, uh, the dairy barns will be moved, there's a new road, we had to go around, talking about the trees over at the stadium, we had to divert that road because it would go through a huge stand of old oak trees, and if you know anything, right where that stoplight is behind, where the Old Visiter Center is, that's the New Tech Center Drive, when it comes out, it will come out there, but if you look at that place, you will see that stand of trees, and so, early on, we understood that we were not to go through the middle of the trees, because the first road that was there was going through the trees, but we said, "No, can't have that, and it has to be diverted", so, um, he's right, there are a number of things that have to come together, but I am amazed at how many things are coming together. The, the new bypass, um, exchange and South Gate Road will be completely closed, uh, to the bypass, because they will be using that area and some other areas for a new life sciences, I think, area, and the, um, the college, the veterinary school is there, I, there, it's all part of a master plan for tech, as well as a master plan for the airport, and a part of the reason that we had to, of course, eliminate those room, buildings on Main Street, South Main, was because of the runway protection zone, there can only be, you know, there can't be any people things going on in those protection zones, and so when you saw that sort of a triangle that came out from the, um, the runway extension, it sort of goes this way, um, that is a runway protection zone, and part of the dairy barns and things like that'll be there, so, uh, much of what you see now will not be there at all within the next three years or so, um, there are just major changes there, and then you will be, the airport, of course, will be able to, um, have the, those corporate jets come in that can fly to Frankfurt, uh, they're looking at it as a, a great economic tool. Ours is a corporate airport that we're part of, whereas the Niagara Valley Airport is more of a commercial airport. But, there are so many flights in and out of, as you heard him say, in and out of that small airport that we have now, and the only reason they could buy 300 gallons instead of 1,000 gallons is that they can't get off the runway with, you know, a heavy load like that, so that's part of the whole deal, but that's been in the master plan for a very long period of time, so there will be enormous changes there, but I just appreciated Mike coming to let you all know, um, because it's better to get it from him than if I sit here every meeting and said, "Here's what's happening, here's what's happening", whereas he knows it all, so, I thank you, and also, um, the only other thing I want to say is I have been going to the, the Social Services Board, um, I, I am totally amazed at what they do and what they have to, uh, try to accomplish with what they do accomplish, and, um, I'm, uh, I am, I have had people ask me about, you know, child protective services as well as adult protective services, uh, there are so many things that are, you know, are going on in, in those realms, uh, that we're not aware of every single day, so, um, I'm glad to be a part of that, and I just wanted to, to tell you that and let you know it, and so, I am looking forward to, um, some of the other meetings that we're planning to have for this, um, this month.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins, Mr. Gabriel?
Um, just a few brief things, again, um, my apologies, but I won't be here on the 25th, I'll be, um, doing research, um, uh, the other thing too is that I attended a school board meeting, uh, last week, and there were a few things that were probably of interest, um, there was facilities update and constructions on schedule, all the schools are scheduled to be open by fall 2013, everything's going well with that. Um, let's see, uh, related to the supplemental appropriation request, um, I, I mentioned this before, but Chairman Jones, when he was asking his board, um, whether they wanted him to send this letter, um, he received a very strong affirmation that, um, agreement by the board that they will spend the money specifically as it will be allocated, that they understand about the miscommunication that happened in the past, they want to make sure it never happens again, and so they're absolutely committed to doing what they say. Uh, and then finally, um, there was a motion to revisit their budget regarding pay-to-play, and they're going to deal with that at a special meeting on the 21st, which is a Thursday, next Thursday, um, and they're, they're gonna try to find some money somewhere in their, their allocated money to, to, to put that back in, so, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gabriel, I have a couple of things, uh, last week, I took a trip to Virginia Beach, I'm on the State Board for, uh, Virginia Cares, which is a reentry program, and, uh, we had a quite an interesting meeting, this was my second statewide meeting, but I think this one was very, very well attended, and we had an opportunity to discuss a lot of the, uh, problems we have with the, uh, prison, with the, uh, release, people released from prison, and where they go, what they do, and Virginia Cares, we have an organization in Montgomery County, started about five or six years ago, I was on the steering committee of that, and, uh, it's grown into quite an organization at this point, but I'm not sure they're meeting all their, all that they would like to do. Um, so, it was an interesting trip. Another little thing that happened here, uh, on Memorial Day weekend, it bothered me a little bit, and I think we need to, uh, have a discussion about when our, uh, Governor's Office gives us zero notice or very short notice to, uh, let people off at 3 o'clock, and I had heard from both the Treasurer and the Commissioner that people were trying to come in and do business in the building, thinking they were open, were told earlier in the week they were open, and I'm sure this could've happened in our departments downstairs and the, uh, building inspectors and whatnot, and then, we were And then, we were closed. So, I would like to see if we could get some discussion on how to handle just the ones where they're last minute. It's done, they've done it twice. Like this last time was during tax time, and people were planning on coming in maybe to pay their taxes, and they were on vacation, wouldn't be back by the 5th. There were calls in advance. Will you be there? Yes. And they showed up after 3, and nobody was there. So, I'd like to see something done with maybe half-staffing, or giving people other days off for, you know, necessary time. And that's really all I've got.
I have a question.
What's he talking about?
Question.
Oh, mine was about Virginia Cares. Do they do anything, Jim, like, if a person comes out of, um, prison, comes back into the community, they've served their time, and then they go to apply for jobs, and of course they have to put down things, and they don't get jobs. Is there any program, 'cause I'm not, you know, I'm not up on this, but I've had different people ask me about this. Is there a program that does somebody help these people when they come back into the community to try to get work, or?
We, we have a couple of missions in that direction. And, uh, one of them is, we are trying to work with local businesses to request them to employ them. There's a federal program, I believe, where if you hire a felon after he's released from prison, there's a, uh, tax credit, and I believe it's good for six months, and I believe it's six or eight hundred dollars a month. Okay, that the employer will get, so it's kind of an incentive. But the Virginia Cares Office, if they get out of prison, and they go there, they try to find them a place to live, they try to help them find a job, they work with counseling, they have kind of like a AA-type situation. But we cover such a large area in the county, in the region. We go Giles, Pilaski, Floyd, so it's, it's hard for a lot of them to get to meetings that we set up and things, but we work real hard at trying to connect all those things.
So like, is there a place I could tell the person to go to?
Yeah, the Virginia Cares Office, and I believe it's, uh, in Radford, by, across this road from, uh, where the Arby's is there on Watchworth, right in the corner of Watchworth and, uh, Main.
Thank you.
I just want to point out that Gary did have to leave, and he's been suffering from, uh, with shingles for some time, and, and that's why he, he left her in the middle of the meeting, or towards the end of the meeting.
And that's all I've got. Motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chairwoman Lewis?
Aye.
Six ayes.